Supervisor's regular meeting from March the 23rd, 2021. Please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just I'll be aware that tonight's board of supervisors meeting is being video recorded. First order of business is a receipt of the minutes of March the 9th. Do I have any questions from supervisors?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved to approve the minutes.
To approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Next up is a presentation by McMahon Engineers. This is an overview of Phase Two of our multimodal transportation grant. I think Stephanie, are you going to present?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Welcome.
I believe Jamie, you're going to give me the ability to share my screen?
Yeah, I've enabled it to allow participant chair, so you should be good.
Okay, great. Well, I am Stephanie Butler, the project manager for the design job of Spring House Phase Two. I believe I saw many of you a few weeks ago as we were talking about Phase One. So I'm going to give a brief overview of where we stand with the Phase Two project, where we've been and where we are headed. So I will bring up my presentation. Alright, looks like I have a green box around it, so hopefully everybody can see it. So as I said, this is going to, we're going to discuss the Spring House roadway improvements, Phase Two, as they're called. I know it's going to be a little tough to see, it's tough to fit on one screen, but this is basically the overview of the project. And if you can kind of draw your attention, I guess, just to the location map in the center, I believe everybody can see my mouse. Obviously, the Spring House Shopping Center is here, the Township Building is over here. And so what I did is basically stacked the plan with Summietown Pike on top and Norristown Road on the bottom. So real, real brief, this is basically where we stand. This is the survey that we've recently obtained. And really, just to draw your attention to the yellow in this plan, that's really the areas that we're going to be doing widening in order to accommodate the multi-lane section along Summietown Pike and Norristown Road. So really, where we've been, obviously, Spring House Phase One was the culvert widening project. The culvert widening project really was just that, and it was just to set us up for the Phase Two project, which is going to include the actual roadway widening to add the additional lanes approaching the intersection and through the intersection. We've also been through the grant agreement process that has taken a long time to basically get underway, but we are underway. Everything is signed and moving forward. So we're able to really move forward with the engineering at this point of Phase Two. And then we've also completed the Phase Two topographic survey. So much of that was done over the winter. However, we really couldn't complete the full amount until the culvert project was finished. And our crew was out there just maybe a week and a half ago, and we were able to bring that as-built survey into into our overall base plan at this point. So where we're headed, obviously, we're, we are into the full-blown engineering design of the project. And it's going to take a little time, but it, but that's, that's, we can finally now with the topo move forward with actual engineering of the project. We do have to go through the highway occupancy permitting process, both with PennDOT because of Norristown Road and Bethlehem Pike, as well as Montgomery County, once again, because of Summietown Pike being a county road. So there will be two sets of permitting applications that go into each entity. Another permitting process, obviously, is with the MPDES, so our stormwater management and our best management practices for post-construction plans and essentially stormwater facilities. So that is another permitting process that will go along concurrently with our roadway improvement permits. But we have utility coordination and clearances. There are a significant number of utilities through this intersection, underground and aerial. So that is a task that happens, it starts early in the design project, design phase of the project, and will continue all the way in through construction. We obviously know that starting that process sooner than later is is just so important in order to keep a project moving forward. Right-of-way and easement coordination. We're not at a point where we can really determine what we need, if we need anything at this point, but there is a good chance we'll need some, whether it's temporary construction easements primarily or possibly, again, we just don't know yet, the status of our limit of disturbance, and if there's going to be any additional right-of-way. Hopefully, there won't be much, but you know, a project of this size, we may encounter it at the limits of work. And then finally, we'll do a pen bid, plan, and spec package to advertise similarly to how we did it with the Phase One project. I'm also going to just talk about the project schedule and then our action items. So I kind of touched base on where we were with the culvert widening project is substantially completed. There's some punchless items that are being taken care of. And we have some submissions in for the reimbursement of that project. So hopefully, within the next, I would say, month or two, we will be able to complete the closeout process for that project. I mentioned the grant agreement process, so that is essentially the PennDOT multimodal grant, which is funding Phase Two. So there was obviously an extensive process in getting the agreement executed due to their program requirements, but that was executed in November of 2020. And that allowed us to be on our way as far as starting the survey for the project. Survey was done in December and January, and as I mentioned, we recently picked up the last piece of it now that the culvert project is finished. And where we're going, we're obviously into the engineering design. We have the horizontal alignments and lane configurations worked out. We are looking at path and sidewalk modifications, where we're adding sidewalk, where we may have to make some modifications to the existing facilities that are out there. A big item, obviously, is drainage and stormwater management within this area of the project. We will evaluate any vertical geometry conditions. There are some areas of embankment on the side of the road where when you widen, it cuts into that embankment, so we have to look at some of the vertical features there. And then obviously, there's traffic signal modifications at the intersection to accommodate the additional, the additional lanes. I mentioned both PennDOT and Montgomery County permits. We are targeting a first submission for the roadway plan package in May of this year. Essentially, they take a 30-day review period, so I kind of outlined the schedule here, which basically assumes a first submission, a review period, and then addressing any comments, another review period, and then we do like to schedule a final submission because more often than not, with a project of this size, there's going to be some button-up items in that third, in that third submission or final submission package. So we're targeting the end of 2021 as far as having our final submission package in and hopefully very close at that point to a permit from both PennDOT and the county. As I mentioned, the MPDES is going to run concurrently with that. We really need to get the first submission in for the HOPs and then really fine-tune the MPDES aspect of it. So I outlined some dates there, and again, concurrently, hopefully, the approval for that will go along with the roadway permits. As far as utility coordination and clearance, again, as I said, that starts now and will continue throughout. We do expect there will be some relocations required. I will get into further detail with regard to poles along Norristown Road, but it looks like there's primarily two poles up near the intersection that are going to be the most impacted, you know, because of the widening up near the intersection. And there is also an underground telephone line that we have to, we have to work with. At the other limit on Summietown Pike, there is a gas pipeline that goes across the road, so we will be needing to complete utility test pits in that area. This is just a standard requirement. On projects that have gas lines, they, they will ask us to complete the test hole so they can locate the lines and we can accurately show them on all of our plans and design around them. So those are a few of the items relative to utilities that we know we're going to encounter. And then where we're going, obviously, in 2021 is any right-of-way and easement coordination. We will obviously evaluate that following our first HOP submission, which then gives us about eight months to deal with any acquisitions or easements that would be necessary. And I'm looking at January of 2022 as the finish line for the engineering design phase where we would get permits issued with all the right-of-way in hand. That's critical because we have to have the right-of-way and any easements for them to issue permits, so that's going to dictate when we can then ultimately move to our RP plans and spec package and move forward with advertising the project. So if all goes up to plan, as, as I'm hoping it will, we should be advertising in about a year, March 2022. We would then expect, you know, roughly a six-week time period for them to bid on the project, and once you then go through the pre-construction stage, we're looking at essentially an award in May, which would align with one of your board of supervisors meetings. And, you know, sometime around June, July, we would, we would hope to issue a notice to proceed. I think as long as all the utility work goes hand in hands, you know, we really, I don't even think that we would need a full year for construction. I think it'll be done sooner than that, but I'm conservatively estimating a year, which gives us a handful of months prior to the actual grant expiration date, which is November of 2023. So in that sense, we would, I think we can demonstrate that, that we're going to absolutely meet the grant timeline, be constructed, and be able to close out the project prior to the grant expiration, which is the PennDOT multimodal grant. The project estimate, which is from the PennDOT grant application, again, that was done back in 2017 and 2018. We did have some escalation in there, but, you know, obviously, these numbers are subject to, subject to change, but hopefully, they will be fairly close to what we expect to happen with, with the project. As I said, there's 1.9 million in, in construction for grant funds, and then the engineering, construction portion and inspection is the match for that amount of money, which is the 589,000. So overall, we're looking at a two-and-a-half-million-dollar project. We do like to identify cost drivers and cost drivers, you know, obviously, things that could affect that number, which utility relocations is one of them. If cost sharing is involved, we do have some utility costs in that estimate already. We make that assumption that there may be some costs involved as well as any right-of-way acquisition. And then obviously, the actual construction dates obviously can affect what happens. You know, we could have seen last year happen. And then when we started getting bids again, you know, during this COVID time, you know, numbers were actually quite a bit lower. We're now starting to see things go up. So obviously, the actual construction time period is, you know, will dictate, you know, what, what we receive as far as bids. So I'm going to try to zoom in a little bit here at the intersection. See if you can see. So here we are at the intersection. The gray is obviously the widening. In this case, you can see a lot of these lines are either aerial or underground utilities, so we do have our work cut out for us to fit drainage facilities in as well as, you know, and try to minimize any impact or, or effects on the utilities, but the way life goes, we're going to have some impacts there. So we're looking at poles that are along this section that we do think we're going to have to relocate near the intersection. However, I do want to jump to one other screen and show you. I don't know if I can quite do that. I may have to stop my share. Um, well, I'll keep going with the presentation, then I can jump back to that plan. I just wanted to touch base on Norristown Road, something that I know is, is on probably a number of folks' minds. Anyway, so action items, obviously, we're going to identify any critical path items, which we will be completing some infiltration testing because we have to deal with stormwater management. We will do the utility test holes. We're also evaluating, obviously, any township or resident concerns. I know there's a drainage issue in this area that we were asked to evaluate. And then obviously, the utility pole locations and vegetation along Norristown Road, which is actually showing up here, so I can zoom in a little bit. And you'll see these poles are in this, in this area. So a handful of years ago, we, I know we've met out there and talked about whether this widening could fit without adjusting those pole locations and thereby, you know, eliminating any impacts to these trees that are along here. Our layout does show that we can fit the lanes in there within the confines of the existing pavement edges. And we do have to place curb and leave a buffer to those poles. So our intent is not to touch those poles. I just have one caveat, and that's really going to be up to PICO if they decide it's needed to move the poles for their, for their purpose or for their clearance to the curb line. Essentially, we can't go any narrower, so this is it, but we, we can fit it in and fit the curb in without moving those poles at this point. But again, PICO will have the last say relative to the speed limit of the road and whether they determine it would ultimately be necessary. And that's just part of our utility coordination that we're going to have to do with them to, you know, understand. And as soon as we have a plan that we can send out to the utilities, which should be pretty soon, we usually send our, our base plan and our improvement plan and ask them for their input to start the process. So I did want to just show that we are not expecting impacts to poles along that, that area at this time. I think the original concept way back when had a little more widening happening in that area. But we are actually, like I said, able to, to work the alignment through and try to keep it within the confines of the existing pavement. Um, this is the area of the, the gas lines. There are a couple of gas lines that run across Summietown Pike. Anytime you widen through their easements, they're going to ask, like I said, for test holes as well as potentially concrete slabs to protect their lines. We actually just worked on a project in another township, almost identical situation. So I think, you know, we've, we've got a good process with that, and I think we'll be able to work with them and understand their specs as well as what, what we need to accomplish in that area. And I think that is all I have, so I'm open to questions.
Alright, Stephanie, I just have a couple of questions for you. First off, the shoulder on the road on the northern side, the, the section we're widening. We had a conversation a long time ago, or I think it was probably Chad, Chad, I don't think you were involved, that we may not have to repave that shoulder, but that would be dependent on core samples. Do you know if core samples were ever done on the shoulder?
We haven't done core samples yet. It will, we will have to look at that still. That'll be part of what we have coming up, I think, at this point. Right now, we are just really showing the widening, but it, there is a chance that we will have to essentially soft cut along the white line and put in full-depth pavement there. But that is part of, part of our, our design task.
Alright, so, so it just hasn't happened yet. The second thing is Old Penland Pike. So we were talking about putting an emergency entrance there because that bridge is no good in terms of the weight. So is that emergency entrance going to, in the plan?
So what we're doing right now is obviously, we're, we're trying to fit in the lanes and the curb lines and see what we have to do with this existing trail that's through here. This is one of the areas that does have some embankment concerns in this area, so instead of a curb, actually, we may need to use more of a single-face barrier to catch up to that slope and then maintain that trail or shift that section of trail back a little bit. That's going to be the vertical that we have to, you know, look a little bit closer into once we have all the sections cut for the roadway. As far as the emergency access to Old Bethlehem Pike, again, we have to see if we can get the vertical grades to work in that area as well as some kind of, you know, the difficulty is how we are going to be able to bring that into the intersection with the signal. So those are definitely on our list of items that we still, we do have to evaluate and figure out what the best way is to fit them in, because we, I do know we have some vertical challenges, just because as you widen the road in a crowned section, right, we're, we're going down and the vertical embankment is higher. So you know, we cannot do anything, obviously, on this other corner. We have to hold that edge and push everything that way. And one of the other items in this area is there is an underground telephone line that is falling, of course, right parallel with the new curb line of the road. So, um, you know, we have to look at all of those things and see how best we can make it work. One of the other sections right here on Bethlehem Pike is, you know, as we widen for the lane and push the, the right turn radius out, we also have to look at that head crossing. And, you know, the island is going to shift, so we are looking at having to pull back the stop bar at that location to allow that head crossing and figure out where the best place is for, for the ramps to accommodate. Because as you widen the roadway, obviously, it affects the, the, the lanes in the intersection, so.
That's, that's alright. I understand what you're saying. I just wanted to make sure that it gets in there.
Yep, absolutely.
That we don't lose it. And if we have to push back the telephone poles, we've got to make sure we put the barriers back, the trees, because those trees have been in there about for 23 years. So they're, they're pretty mature, and we've got to make sure we keep the sound down for the residents that are, that live behind there.
Right. And we definitely don't want to, anything, you know, obviously, this area of widening, we do have to widen, but we're not looking. I, I think there'll be some trimming that has to happen in that area, but these trees back down here that are a little bit further back, where the pavement is already to that point, we don't suspect that we're going to have to do anything.
Okay, so, so most of them will be, will be able to preserve those.
Right.
And, and that, so there's a lot of goodness there. So we just have to watch out, make sure we don't flood the intersection with the stormwater. That might be a little tricky.
I think one of our biggest challenges is really going to be the, getting the drainage system in, minimizing the impacts to the utilities and, and, you know, and getting our pipe system to work in and around all the utilities that are there.
Right, okay, I'm good.
Not anything out of the ordinary. It's just the nature of these types of projects that, that's what's going to happen. But, and, and everything, everything's possible.
Right.
It's going to be a matter of how, how we can, how we can make it work.
I'm sure you will get it to work, Stephanie.
I, I, I'm, I'm very hopeful.
I'm sure you will. Has, has Chad talked to you about Phase Three at all or no?
Uh, yes, yes, we have talked about Phase Three. So we actually, myself and my engineers have looked at Phase Three as far as, you know, what would need to be done.
Alright, well, I don't want to take up anybody's time tonight at Phase Three, but, you know, getting Phase One complete, getting Phase Two started, you know, Phase Three would be two-plus years from now, which is, you know, township time is tomorrow, I realize that. But there's a lot going on within this intersection. So that's really all the questions I have. Is there any more questions from the supervisors?
Yes, I have a question mark. Well, two things. First of all, what, what is the history behind giving emergency access to the old Bethlehem Pike?
I'd give you a quick answer to that. There's a bridge on Old Bethlehem Pike. It's a stone bridge. It's, it's weight-restricted. Fire trucks cannot get over that bridge. So there are two properties back there, so if there's a fire, we need to get trucks back there. We can't do it, so we have to, they have to come in some way. And the best way to do that would be to have emergency ingress right there. So that's the purpose of the emergency road.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think that we have in our budget for this year, engineering costs to drill down on the real assessment of the integrity of that bridge. Am I right about that, Craig?
Yes, the boring, boring tests have been done. We have not received the, the answers to those tests.
Yeah, so we're assessing the real vulnerability of that bridge this year.
Correct.
My second question, this is just aesthetics, but are we going to, well, will that lot there that the township owns at the intersections be used as a staging ground for the next two or three years?
It'll be cleaned up after Phase One and put back the grass, and then it'll be a Phase Two staging area as well. And that was all along the plan when we purchased the Texaco Station, that that would be used as the staging area.
Okay.
So Stephanie, thank you very much for your attention to the sensitivity of the poles and the berm along Norristown Road there. Thanks so much for that. And point well taken, that the final call with the polls come from PICO. What right-of-ways and easements are you thinking might need to be obtained?
Um, I think the primary, at the limit on Summietown Pike, you know, where we're tapering back into the existing road, you can see where the right-of-way line is. So I think right at the limit, we're going to be okay. But as we go towards the right on this plan sheet, you can see we get pretty close to the right-of-way with the edge of road. So any grading beyond that, that new edge of road or curb line, any swale or anything like that, that we're going to need to get any drain, you know, off-road drainage down to the creek might put us beyond that, that right-of-way line in that area. You can see on this sheet, this is the property line, and that's where it jogs, and it's pretty close, right? We're essentially right on the legal for that property. And then obviously, the shopping center, we have, we have right-of-way, and they've already done that widening, so we're in real good shape, obviously, along that frontage. And we're going to hold their curb line and work, obviously, across Summietown Pike down to this side where you start to see the widening again. So I think, I think that's probably our primary location that we're going to need to coordinate with. So I think, I think that's probably our primary location that we're gonna need to coordinate with. Um, regarding right of way, we can't, there's really nothing we can do to shift any of the widening the other way, because then, you know, it just doesn't work alignment wise, so I think that's the critical
Okay.
Critical location. As far as everything else, we're in, we're in the right of way. Um, you know, as we approach the intersection, um, we have the room um, along here to do what we need to do, then we, uh, we are showing, this wasn't on the original concept plan, but with the, the township trail that comes in at this location, along the creek. Uh, we're now, we are gonna show sidewalk picking up, obviously going over the new structure, um, and then down to the intersection. Um, and then, yeah, so there'll be sidewalk on both sides of that, of that section of Summietown Pike. I think moving, um, to the right on this plan, I think we're in pretty good shape right of way wise. Um, all the way down, there's nothing happening on the bottom side of the road, we're holding that edge of road and pushing everything in the other direction, so. Um, I think, you know, quite frankly, I really think it's gonna be that upper, you know, the, the Summietown.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions from the supervisors? Any questions from the members of the audience?
Sorry.
Any hands up, Craig?
I, I'm not seeing any hands up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie, thank you so much for the briefing, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Alright, thank you, take care.
Good night.
Good night. Next up, it's a presentation by Communication Solutions. Uh, this is a result of our survey. Lisa, are you here? Yes, you are.
Of course, yes, I'm here, I'm here.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you, and I think what I'll do is I will share, I know you have my presentation up, but I'm gonna share my screen, because I, I, uh, I tried to tighten things up a little bit, uh, just to make things, uh, move a little faster, um, time-wise, so. Thank you for having me, um, whenever I, I have my own PowerPoint, there's always like this weird lag time while I'm waiting for, uh, the slides progress, so give me one second of, there we go, okay. Um, well, it's a pleasure to present this, um, this plan, this, the survey to you, um, let me give you the background on it, um, and, and the process that we went through to get, um, all of the findings that we did. So initially, we had a, um, a visioning session with both, um, members of the township supervise, some of the township supervisors that were involved in, um, the community outreach, um, committee, as well as staff members to, um, identify some of the priorities and just to really tape, take a deep dive into your caring communication processes. Um, then we developed the survey, um, it was shared once again with both of those parties for review, and some additional edits were made. And then we administered the survey, um, starting February first, which very conveniently coincided with a major snowstorm, which really worked to our advantage, because everyone was stuck at home and had nothing to do. Um, and then we were initially gonna carry it out for two weeks, but we carried it out for a third week. How did we get this out and about? Well, in addition to the township promoting it on its website and through email blast, um, we did develop a press release, so it was pushed out and picked up in Montgomery newspapers, um, or, I guess, um, around Ambler, it was picked up on Patch. And then we carried it over to all the kind of local, local social media sites, um, Lower Gwinnett Living Network, um, Lower Gwinnett Moms, um, all of those places, so that it was pushed out to a lot of social media outlets. In addition, we got, um, Whistaken School District was very helpful and shared the link with all of their families and shared it on their, their Facebook page and social media site. Um, knowing that not everybody is connected digitally, we, um, made our rounds to the, um, the senior living communities, and that resulted in another hundred and twenty paper responses, which we then entered into the database. So a total of one thousand ninety-seven surveys were received from respondents who lived within the township. Um, the other great news is we got an additional three hundred and eighty residents, um, agreed to provide their email addresses. These are people that you did not have email addresses for before, so that was, uh, that was great. So, the first thing we asked them was based on the map, um, did they live in Lower Gwinnett Township? A hundred and forty-three said no, and so they were pulled out of the survey pool. So everything else that you'll see moving forward are people that say they, they live in the township. Um, we asked them which locations they most closely identify with, so you could see the, the breakdown there um, in terms of where they're saying they're, they're coming from. Okay, and then we asked them who they were, basically, um, and you'll see, obviously, no surprise, the majority of them were, um, residential property owners, um, we did secure seventeen percent response from the folks living in the senior living communities, um, and then nonprofit organizations or schools, um, participated in the survey as well. Um, this is interesting, this just shows really, um, a demographic snapshot of your area. I know we talked, you know, early on about the fact that, um, you're typically not considered a, you know, a a first home community, and I think some of that's reflected in, or starter home community, some of that's reflected in the data of the ages and something that we need to keep in mind as we move through the survey. Okay, um, I guess I'm not surprised with this, sixty-seven percent of the people that filled this out were female, but you need to remember that it's very possible that this was a collaborative effort between a husband and a wife. Um, you did not have the opportunity to go back on through the same email address and complete the survey multiple times, we wanted to prevent that from happening, so I'd like to think that pay, maybe there were, there was, you know, a, you know, a family input on this. Some interesting questions, how important is it for you to know what's going on within the township? Um, nearly one hundred percent said it's important for them, either somewhat or very important, so that's really good data. But now look at the next one, um, how aware are you of Lower Gwinnett Township news and initiatives? Seventy-eight percent said they wish they knew more about what was going on in the township, so that's, that's, that's sizable. We went on and we asked them, these were through, um, quantitative questions, where do you receive the majority of information about the township news and activities? There's two things that really stand out here, um, one grade, one a little troubling. Newsletters obviously rises above everything else, these are your newsletters, by the way, that you send out twice a we- year. Um, rise of, uh, above everything else, but now look what's second in the running there, that's word of mouth. So that's kind of people that you talk to, uh, to be a little bit more blunt, it's the rumor mill. So that's where people are, are getting their, their information from. Moving on, we rated the effectiveness of each of the vehicles, and we used a scale where blue meant this method is effective at keeping me informed, red meant it is not. Um, green, I did not know this communication existed, um, and then not applicable. So once again, what I do when I look at charts like this is what's really high in the blue and what's a bit too high in the green, okay, because that means they had no idea you were doing it. So obviously, the blue is transcending above, above everything else. Um, but now look at the forty percent that did not know the township was sending emails out. Um, didn't really, twenty-eight percent and thirty-two percent that didn't realize that you had a social media presence, so, um, these are, these are, these are interesting numbers, and we'll talk more about this. We continued on to some other areas, so, um, so I apologize that people are not honed into your supervisor meetings. Um, as they're, as, as, all the time, um, but if you once again look at what is high, that stands out, thirty-eight percent word of mouth from community members, also standing out as very high. And so, you know, I, I just take a look at those things again, um, and so in a nutshell, um, the newsletter received the highest marks, it's sixty-four percent. Um, I feel the website and email, based on similar surveys that we've done from municipalities, should have ranked higher. Um, but my main concerns data-wise are that seventy-eight percent of the respondents wish they knew more about what's going on in the township, that's pretty high, forty percent didn't know that email updates existed, and almost as many of those people are getting information from their neighbors, so that leaves you in kind of a vulnerable situation in terms of just lack of accurate information. So we took a deeper dive into all of these things, so how often do you visit the township website? And you'll take a look and see, um, where those numbers break, and I wouldn't expect someone to daily be hopping on the website. Um, but certainly seasonally, I'd expect to see, um, you know, some activity on the website. The next question was an open-ended question, where they could have said anything, um, so we left it open. What are your reasons for visiting the website? These, um, open-ended questions are usually like a blessing and a curse, because they result in, um, you know, hundreds of responses, and then we quantify them under categories, but I think it's a very helpful way to get honest feedback without leading people towards certain responses. So, um, anyway, um, this is what they use it for, nearly ninety percent of those who answered the question said they use it to find information, but then we asked them, what kind of information? So as you can see, the breakdown, the trash recycling, uh, leaf collection, activities and events, smaller number for zoning or construction, meetings, trails and parks, so you see the breakdown of, of why people are going to your website. Um, so let me tell you why this is a little of a concern, how often do you browse township social media sites? This is a bit of a concern, because when we asked people in the open-ended area, where are they getting their information? The majority of people said Facebook, um, overwhelming Facebook, um, way far. And then following that was Twitter and Nextdoor and Instagram. And then when we also asked them about the local media, you'll see that you still have people that are turning to their local media outlets for updates on what's going on in their community, and I will get back to this a little later when I make my, my recommendations. Um, so we already, you know, the effectiveness of township social media, certainly not as effective as, you know, it should be. Um, a lot of people not aware, um, that you had it, and, um, really some comments, and you guys will have, this is the abbreviated version, um, you will have, you, you have the full report, because there's lots of pages of open-ended comments that you'll be able to browse through, I just know I have some, some time parameters here. But a little bit about what people are looking to social media for in terms of informations, profiles on residents, something that's really gonna kind of connect people together. Um, okay, so now, this is really impressive, which, which phrase describes how you read the township's newsletter? I have never seen this before, the majority read it cover to cover, that's, uh, so this is a big deal when this comes in the mailbox. Or they go to their, their regular articles, um, but this is, this is something that people have come to expect. Um, and they, they, they scour through it, um, so, um, very interesting. We asked them a bit about how they'd like to receive that, um, that, um, email, and you kind of see a split between people that wanted in some sort of an electronic format by email and those people that wanted, um, that wanted by, by mail. Um, when asked about the frequency of the newsletter, the majority, um, said that they felt that you should increase um, the frequency of the newsletter, and some of the comments that we got, you know, in the open-ended section, it, you know, had to do with some of the timeliness of the newsletter, um, and just information kind of being passed, passed after the fact, um, so, um, kind of a deeper dive into the newsletter. Um, you know, the majority want you to increase the frequency, the majority, sixty percent read it cover to cover. Um, split on the delivery method, I, you know, I'll say this later, but I think that, um, would be our recommendation that you look at both approaches, perhaps, um, quarterly mailing of the newsletter and supplement that with a, an e-newsletter, um, update so, to people, so they know what is going on. Um, how can we make the township newsletter more useful to you? Once again, this is one of those open-ended questions. I noticed that thirty-four percent, um, without being prompted, said increase the frequency. Um, there was a lot of references to the need for ti- more timely information. Um, um, and then if you add in, um, you know, more event, the interest in getting more access to events, um, you see those numbers jump up, and open-ended to distribute it electronically. Um, some summaries here, once again, you'll have the comments, concerns about it being outdated, um, um, more frequent distribution, a- as I said earlier, and then I put in red, something that I think is really important for you to know. They're not being put in the mailboxes of the adult living communities, they're being just stacked outside the mailboxes. So if people, um, are not, if they have a care, an aide or caregiver going and getting their mail for them, they most likely are not picking up that newsletter. Okay, are you currently receiving emails from the township? So the bad news is seventy-one percent said they're not. But the good news is, um, three hundred and eighty people have provided their addresses, so now, um, those can get on the lists, start getting those emails. And then we decided, well, let's do a little brainstorming and take a look at what they would be interested in if you were looking at other ways to enhance your communication, so once again, the fa- the criteria is this initiative would be greatly benefit the community, this would somewhat, and then this would not. So, um, look at the text messaging to communicate time-sensitive information. Um, there were comments through the open-ended sections about road closures and water issues and things that people felt that had they had the ability to receive a text, um, that would have helped alleviate, you know, a lot, a lot of heartache for them. Um, the monthly email with links to each topic for ease of accessibility, um, clearly stood out there. And then it looks like we've already, you know, late started, and perhaps you've already laid the groundwork yourself with Whistaken St- School District. People, um, definitely see that as a benefit, they're a logical distribution point for some of the important meetings and information that you need to share. Um, we moved on and we can, continue to ask some other questions, and these also stood out, so, um, there was a lot of comments about the fact that you used to speak frequently at the retirement communities, and that was a pretty big deal to them, that you came in and updated them. I'm sure COVID has a lot to play with the fact that you're not doing that anymore, but they definitely would like to see that resume. Um, because so many of them are continuing to rely on the Ambler Gazette and your traditional local media, um, a lot of the things that you're pushing out, they'd like to see, you know, in the local press, which means you need to send out press releases. So, um, those are the updates on that, on that, so, you know, um, in a nutshell, the things that, um, you know, stood out, that they feel would be beneficial, if you combine the, um, very, this would be very beneficial, this would be, you know, somewhat beneficial, eighty-six percent want a monthly e-newsletter, seventy-four want you to text them time-sensitive information. Sixty-seven, um, want better coordination with the school district, they want to see your press releases in the local press. They want you more involved with the local retirement communities. Um, okay, what other communications initiatives would you suggest? Once again, this was, um, um, this is just kind of spitballing, again, let me just go back, yeah, this is pretty much spitballing, but you see some of the repeats again in this, in terms of what they're looking for, um, more emails and texts, um, more frequent use of social media to communicate important information. Um, and, and it goes on, it's kind of a repeat of what you saw, but the benefit of showing you this is this came from open-ended responses, where people could have either ignored it or said something, and, and this is what they said. Um, how would you rate the overall quality of communication you receive within the township? Forty percent said good, forty percent said fair. And then how would you rate the quantity of communication you receive from the township? Sixty-six percent said too little communication, uh, so this is, you know, opening the door for you to, you know, kind of increase that, and they've given their, their ideas of what they want. Um, I'm gonna walk through kind of the takeaways that I got from this, like if you, if you absolutely had, what stood out, what really hit me in the face of stuff that you have to do on the slides that follow. Um, before I do, I just want to remind you of my big, our biggest concern, which was the seventy-eight percent that wish they knew more of what's going on, and the heavy reliance on word of mouth from the neighborhood, really, two things that are just a making for, um, lots of miscommunication, so. What do you need to do? Publish more newsletters, okay, they're reading it cover to cover, you should increase the frequency. Um, you should look at, it looks like you have advertisers, so perhaps those advertisers could sustain you through a quarterly mailing of the newsletter, and then look at an, a mon- a month to fill the gaps with the monthly email via newsletter, via, uh, monthly newsletter via email. Okay, there are a lot of text service options out there, I looked into some of them. Um, we do a lot of school, work for school districts, and I know the text service is the lifeblood for them to let their parents know we're closing down because of ICE, come get your kids, we have no heat, come get your kids. Um, you have an a mani- a manageable size community, um, so I, you know, I think you definitely need to look at, um, a text option and, um, you know, growing that base of, of email followers um, and, and, and making sure they're getting this information. Um, there was some complaints about not knowing about training, changing tracks, hot, trash haulers, um, that people that people weren't aware of it, you know, perhaps it was on the website, but as we saw, people weren't regularly going to the website and they weren't getting the email. Okay, this is easy. Increase the media coverage. You have a middle aged plus demographic. They're still turning to their local papers. They're heavily using Facebook. It's really easy to just draft a press release about what's going on and send it off to the local managing editor so that they pick it up. And then they pick it up electronically and they pick it up in print. So it's a one-two punch, punch in terms of getting that story out. Okay, okay, so there's your, 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 your presence on social media, you know, people aren't really, they're not following you on social media, but they are surely on social media. And so what you almost need to do is take your posts and you need to push them out to all the community pages that they're following. So like I said, when I pushed out the, the announcement about the survey with the link, I found a home for it in the Facebook page called Wissaken School District Community Forum. I found it, Lower Gwinnett Living, Lower Gwinnett Moms. There were all these pages that people are regularly going on their page. So it's just a matter of carrying your content over, you know, getting, getting entry into the group and starting to share your information. That's how you start getting them over to your Facebook page and over to your, over to your, your website. I think your website is, is really, is really pretty and it does seem to contain some important information. But you know, as we saw from the data, it's very underutilized by stakeholders. So we took a real close look at the website to see what some of the issues were. And I'm gonna scroll back and forth between this slide and some images. So granted, I did enlarge this a bit for the sake of putting it on the slide. But you have a lot of real estate on your homepage that's devoted to a very large banner graphic, okay? It's, it scrolls very, very slowly, too slowly. But your most essential information is at the very bottom of your website. You actually don't see it on your screen. You'll have to keep scrolling and scrolling to get down there. So some of this stuff at the bottom that's pretty important really needs to be moved up. It's easy stuff to do. I, I don't think you need a, I don't think you needed a new website. I just need, think you need some changes to how your stuff is oriented right now. And you know, we could certainly, you know, sit down with your website designer and provide some recommendations for that. So another thing I guess I want to show you as it relates to the website and social media. And you know, this is, this is, this is really, this just speaks to the fact that it would be helpful if you had somebody that, you know, just did social media a good chunk of time. So if we look at this, this piece which went out, okay? If you initially looked at it and you didn't look any further, what would you think it's about? It's a general reminder, right, to just turn back your claw or move your clock forward. But is that really what's in this post? Look at this post and you'll see that it's telling you about information that's now available on tax bills, roadwork and how to recycle your electronics, that that information's coming up. These things can all be found on your website and they're really important. But there's no links in this post to those sections of your website. And quite honestly, they probably should each be their own social media post. They all serve very different purposes. And they should all have a link to take people right back to the website. That's how you get people there. So taking a really careful look at what you're posting, I think is, is really important with social media. Another issue, engaging your senior citizens. They make up seventeen percent of the response pool. They brought up some things that we, none of us would probably ever known otherwise, right? About the newsletters not being inserted, they're just being stacked, so they're not being read. So that's really keeping them in the dark. And they really miss having you guys there. So once everyone's vaccinated, you should really come back. What I would suggest is perhaps hold a Zoom call with the programming directors or the general managers of these centers, let them know the data was very helpful and speak to them about what you could do moving forward to kind of step up that interaction with that community. And now I'm ready for questions that you might have. I don't, hopefully I didn't exceed my time limit.
Wow.
I know, I, I talk fast and there was a lot of information to go through, but.
So those three hundred and eighty emails that you received?
Yeah.
Did you automatically just sign them up for the email blast? Or were they aware of the fact that they, that that's how that information was going to be used?
I sent them to Craig and Jamie and then they could speak to what they did from, for, with them from there.
Okay, because the way we have it set up is that a resident needs to actually basically consent by going on the website and, you know, signing up for the email blast, so.
That's what Craig said, yeah. And I think that's what he did. He pushed them out to all of those people.
Okay.
Yeah.
They, we can't sign them up, but what we did was send, we sent an email to every person that was on that list and gave them the direct link to sign themselves up. And I did get feedback from a few of the people, actually, a good amount of people that said that they had gotten it and that they had signed up.
Right, right. So that would be a perfect option to like take, create that post and then put it on your social media and then carry it over to all those other community pages with that link that would take them right there.
I just wanted to say thank you. It was a very excellent presentation. I appreciated all the feedback. I know that you shared it with me and Mark in the communications committee, but I did have one thought. I know that the respondents kind of indicated that supervisor meetings weren't helpful. Was there, there was no follow up around if the recordings or the ability to go back and view them after the fact?
Oh, it, it wasn't, I don't think the phrase was that they weren't, they just weren't, let's go back.
Kind of how they were getting information.
Yeah, yeah, how they were getting their information.
Yeah, that's my characterization.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not using it as a vehicle to get knowledge about what's happening.
No, no, no.
But I was kind of curious if, if, I don't know if there's the ability now and I, obviously at the time of the, the survey, we didn't kind of ask that question, but if the ability to go back and look at the.
I will tell you, there were no comments in the open ended sections that said, you know, the supervisors are, you know, talk too much or the supervisor is this, or I don't know what they're talking about. There was nothing like that.
I, I appreciate the feedback. I think the, the things that stood out to me were the fact that the newsletter was so readily received and welcomed. And that word of mouth was second to the newsletter as, as a big concern.
Yeah, you know, I wanted to say something about the newsletter, you know, as an initial glance, you know, I thought, well, it would be, my initial thought in with the communications audit before I got all the data back was my initial look was like, well, you know, it might be nice to, you know, maybe update the look of this. But after seeing how many people have come to recognize that and how many people are reading it, I absolutely positively would not change it at all because people are coming to look for it.
So I think a lot of that is that the newsletter, I mean, that has been a time immemorial staple in everybody's mailbox. And so they're trained, so to speak.
Yes.
Right? So you know, when we're trying to think about other communication methods, that's kind of what we need to think about is that, you know, the training that the, so the newsletter could probably help us make that transition to other, you know, newer ways of communicating.
Exactly, especially if you're gonna start supplementing with a digital copy and there's gonna be links in it to sign up for things to follow you on, like us on Facebook. You follow that link through the digital letter, yeah.
Right. What were the other, you said Lower Gwinnett Moms and Lower Gwinnett Living?
Oh, yeah, so it was Wissaken, so it was Wissaken School District.
Yeah.
Wissaken Community, WSD Community Forum.
Yep.
Okay, Lower Gwinnett Moms, um, Lower Gwinnett Living Network, Blue Bell Moms. Um, I basically just looked for, you know, any like community, community clusters where people were looking for babysitters or whatever that seemed like they, they were within your area. And if they weren't, then they were naturally weeded out when they filled out the survey.
Yeah, I think Whit Payne Moms might be one of them.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That was very, very informative.
One, one, you know, if I could say one final suggestion, you, you put the effort into this. The community took the time to fill it out. I, I'd suggest that you, you know, maybe consider a press release about what you learned from the community. And, you know, and, and, you know, and, you know, thank you for that feedback, basically. Because you are hoping to now move ahead with some of this stuff down the road, or at least you're looking at it.
If I can make a comment. Yes, first of all, Lisa, I concur with Danielle. I thought your presentation was well done tonight. And, and I think you're doing a great job and it's just what we need to hear back the opinions of the residents. My one question to you, as professional as you are, when you pick up our newsletter and you took a look at the township newsletter, we know how valuable it is. I have seen over the years that the newsletter has been driven cost wise by doing a lot of advertising.
A lot of that, that came up.
And, and, and my question to you is first look at, I think the newsletter has too much in reference to advertising and it overtakes the information part of what it was essentially meant to be when it was developed years ago. I picked it up when I see years ago, I mean, years ago, it was more of an informational newsletter. Now it looks to me like it's seventy-five percent advertising, twenty-five percent information. And I wanted your professional opinion because you're, you're a professional.
Yeah.
And I wanted you, your comments on that.
There, the ads are huge and they're rather overwhelming. They do compete with the copy. But I also understand that they drive revenue. So what I would suggest is that you have a devoted section at the end that says like spotlight on our supporters or something. All of the ads are there. And then part of your negotiation with them is that you throw in an opportunity for them to post on your, you know, and a hyperlink to you on their, you know, you start cross marketing with social media for them. So you know, there's more, so they don't feel like, you know, oh, they're banishing me. You're actually stepping up your game because you're giving them a designated section. And now you're looking at some other levels of support that they could get from you through your website and social media.
Lisa, a comment on your comment. If I was the advertiser, I would be concerned to the fact that I would read the first four to six pages and the designated area in the back for the advertisers would be torn off, not read and never read because I got all the information in the first four pages. So why would an advertiser want to be isolated in the, in the backend rather than in the middle of the information?
Well, I think if they started to weave into their ad design some sort of a offer or discount to, to residents of your community with a code like mention LG when you call us to schedule your appointment or order your pizza or whatever it is. I think it would drive people, just like we all get the, the Clipper magazine or, you know, the, the Val pack and we all flip through that to see what kind of savings there are. I think you could accomplish that still and have that revenue and, and get people looking back there with a change of orientation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to add that the majority, I think that's fair to say, majority of those advertisers are lower Gwinnett businesses. So we are, you know, we're promoting our community at the same time. Those advertisers.
Thing is, if you carry them over onto, and you thank them for their support on social media and you tag them, you're then gonna start getting, getting some of their followers that are following them on social media. So you could start migrating some of those people over so they're following you as well.
Very good, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't want to overwhelm the conversation here with the newsletter. But just so everybody recalls, about eight years ago, I think it was, we went from a one hundred percent township paid publication to, I believe, free with the advertisers picking up the cost. And I think back about eight years ago and Craig, you might have the numbers, I want to say it was twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We were spending a township money and we're no longer spending that money and still getting the newsletter out. So it's, it's just a, a budget thing as well. We gotta be mindful of how much we spend and how targeted it is.
Yeah, I, I actually like to see the advertisements because I like to win possible frequent local businesses. And so that reminds me of, of who our local businesses are. If I'm looking for windows or a plumber or something like that. So I, I do like the idea of keeping the advertisements in there. But Lisa, really, you've given us such great information. I, I really appreciate your presentation and, and your work and your team's work on this survey. It's, it's very enlightening. I, I think some of it, some of the results confirmed my, my thoughts going into this. And, and also we got some new information. So I, I think we have some really good opportunities to address the shortcomings in, in our communication strategy.
Excellent, that was the goal. So I'm glad you found it helpful.
You know, Danielle and I saw this presentation the other day as members of the communications committee. And I was impressed with it and, and it's taken me a while to, you know, assimilate some of this information. So much information here and there's so much of it that's actionable. So we're going to, the communications committee will, will be meeting again, I'm sure, with Lisa and staff to figure out, all right, now that we have all this information, what do we do next? And there's a lot to do. So everybody should stay tuned because we're going to make some changes here in our public profile, as is indicated in the, in the survey. Thank you very much, Lisa. We appreciate you.
Thanks. Any other questions for me?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question from the audience member, Melinda Wolf.
Hi, thank you. A quick question before I ask a, a deeper question. You said there were about eleven hundred respondents. How many people are in the township? What's our population?
We talked about the households. Did you say?
Eleven thousand is the population, roughly forty-eight hundred households.
Eleven thousand households approximately, so there.
Well, about forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Three hundred households, eleven thousand is the total population.
A population, okay. Um, because I was trying to figure out what the percentage of responses were. And communication, so the survey was, when you talk about communications, it's really kind of like the one way communications from the township to the residents. Was there any, was there, I, I took the survey, but I don't remember there being a question about the other way of communicating. Was there any questions about how we as residents can best communicate with?
You got cut off, I'm sorry. How you could best communicate with the township?
Yeah, the, the other direction, like input to them or, or, you know, who's, who's on first or, you know, what's going on? That wasn't part of.
Keep them abreast of things that you're up to or I'm not sure I understand.
Or they ask question, you know, just a, a specific question of, let's say, the zoning people not knowing.
Oh, who, oh, you know what? It didn't actually focus on like, how aware are you of who your contact is regarding this or that? It was how they were utilizing the communication vehicles that, that the township had available.
Okay, and then with regards to newsletter, the newsletter is great. I don't mind the ads at all. And I agree with some of the comments that were already made. One, it, we're, we're smart enough, it's not like a pop up ad when you're in, you know, on Amazon or something, you get a pop up ad that's like right in your face and you can't even ignore it. I mean, you can easily ignore an ad as you're reading a newsletter. The problem with a newsletter though, and I was the one who commented about the timeliness of it, so often there's been articles that were, you're reading it, it's like, oh, that's already happened, that's passed. But it's really great for, plus the, the contributors have to put in their articles so far in advance in order for them to lay it out and that sort of thing. So I know that's, that's an issue, but it, it's great for highlighting something that's not as timely. And going for the monthly emails would be fantastic as a way of, of communicating. And what, who is in charge of sending out those emails? Like how does, who originates them or, because emails are now being sent out? You, you have our emails and we're gonna be put on an email list.
Right, automatically.
It's what?
It's, it's automatically set up when the township has a information item that we think you need to know about. Once you have, once you're registered. you automatically will receive an email when there's a communication, you know, announcements or anything from the township. And there's several that go out a week.
Okay, so it's not like one, you don't have one person that has to sit there and.
Oh, no, it's automated.
Caster.
Yeah, it's it's our manager. It's it's Craig McInally and Jamie are the manager and assistant manager.
Okay, but he doesn't have to create the text for it.
No, he's.
You guys submit to him.
There's automation involved and it's not one person keying, you know, a thousand people.
Right, exactly. Okay, that's that's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any more questions out there, Craig?
Not seeing any at the moment.
Okay, then we're going to move to the next item on the agenda. And Craig, was the agenda updated or was it already distributed? Because we changed the agenda today.
Yes, it was up. It is not updated. So we'll have to.
Okay, the next, the next thing that was up was authorization upgrade the fuel management system. I had a bunch of questions on that. So we're going to table that for for another meeting. Next is authorization upgrade the AV equipment in the board caucus room. Jamie, you're up.
All right, my computer, I timed out. Okay, so I had issued a memo requesting authorization to move forward with purchasing the audio visual equipment upgrade for the caucus room. We had actually discussed this in two thousand and nineteen. But when we went forward with the boardroom, we took the caucus room out. And so with the intention that we would revisit this in two thousand and twenty-one. So when we did the budget for two thousand and twenty-one, we put funding in the budget for the caucus room upgrade, which is just putting in a new screen and replacing the projector that's currently there, the ceiling mounted projector. And then also installing the little panel that we that we have the same, like it's a smaller version of what we did in the main boardroom. And that's kind of where you access everything and you control everything from this panel. So the quote that we got is from Delco Solutions, which is the same company that did the main boardroom. And they are quoting eleven thousand, eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-five is what we budgeted, which is what their quote is for the caucus room upgrade. But then they also, when they were doing the main boardroom, they discovered that we had a number of speakers that weren't functioning from the ceiling in the main boardroom. So their quote is actually for fifteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars. That includes the replacement of, I believe, six speakers in the main boardroom in addition. So we did get three quotes. The other two quotes are slightly under that. But I think to have the consistency between the two boardrooms, I think it would be a lot better for people to be able to utilize as the equipment. And then we would have a consistency with any service issues that might come up. So that's the request is to move forward with the with Delco Solutions.
And what's your confidence level, Jamie?
I I think they did a great job with the boardroom. They they're kind of a whole package. So one of the quotes that we got from this star ABR, their their amount was a little lower, but they don't do any of the electrical work. We'd have to go out and bring our own electrician in. Delco does everything. You know, it's the soup to nuts thing. So they, I think that they were reliable. They came in, they got it complete. They actually had a little issue where we wanted the screen to still recess into the wood molding in the boardroom and they troubleshooted it. And they were able to complete it and it looks great. So I think the panel, having everything on that one little screen to be able to control the projector, the screen, the video monitors, that's all really easy to do. And I think if we can carry that over to caucus room, I think that would be really helpful for everybody that utilizes that room. And right now, when we do presentations in there, you'll recall, we always had an issue with the screen didn't fit the projection. It was always off the sides or and it was kind of blurry, not really clear. It wasn't really ideal for presentations in that room. So.
Which which was an upgrade to the overhead projector. So years ago. So so we're moving along. Yes, yes, we are. We're moving along. Does any of the supervisors have any questions about this?
Does it include a warranty? And and if so, how long? I was looking, I didn't see.
I don't think that he put the warranty in, but he did give us, he did give me information about a warranty before. And I believe it's the manufacturer's warranty, I think, is about, I want to say it was three years. But I can't get him to confirm that. But I would believe it's the same because it's all the same manufacturer, the equipment is all the same that he did in the main boardroom.
So are we paying for the main boardroom? Are we paying for any kind of ongoing technical assistance or like if if something were to break down, that they would come out and repair it? Are we paying for any of that?
And we did, they did provide us information when we did the boardroom. It was that gold. They had like three levels of service contracts that you can enter into with them. And I think the board had indicated that they wanted to go with the top, the gold level of that. So they do offer that. And they can really, I mean, they're very responsive. They've been really great. They've been out a couple of times to just finish up a few things. We have a listening device for ADA for hearing impaired. And when they came out, it wasn't, it wasn't doing something right. So they they, you know, they fixed that, handled that. And they also replaced the two monitors. That wasn't in our original quote, but they had additional room in the budget. So they were able to replace that for us, too. So they've been really responsive. They do have, they do have a service contract. We can enter into them.
Does this equipment that we're acquiring allow us to? I know it allows us to record and, you know, post. Does it allow us to do live streaming? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Any more questions from the supervisors? Any more questions from members of the public?
I do not see any hands being raised.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the upgrade to the AV equipment for fifteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is appointment of EAC chairperson. Now, I've got a couple of comments on this. The EAC has only been around for a couple of years, but the, before that, we were the Gwinnett Green. Now, this is the original creation, which was eleven plus years ago. It's the only committee, it's one of two committees that I've served on for the entire time. There was not a Green Committee or an EAC Committee in Lower Gwinnett until Ed Brandt decided we needed one. And that was eleven plus years ago. So he created it. And as chairman, he put me on the committee. During that tenure, Ree Monahan has been our chair for most of that time. It's a lot of work to be very, if you're very conscientious, if you're very focused on getting something done, there's a lot of work involved. And the the EAC has got a lot of dedicated Lower Gwinnett Township residents and some 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 folks that aren't in the township have also joined us. So it's a dynamic organization and Ree's been the chair for most of that. So I'd like to thank you. Thank Ree for all her dedication. It's it's been very, very helpful and very needed. But it's also demanding on Ree's time. So so Ree came to me and said, hey, look, I I'm involved. I want to stay involved. But she didn't want to be chair anymore. And I I can completely understand that. It's turned into a job. So so we got together to try to figure out, okay, who could replace her? And the answer is nobody. So who could, who could come close? And we have a gentleman on the on the EAC that could. So Ree, would you like to introduce Mark?
Oops, as I'm trying here.
Put you on the spot, Ree.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Here I am. Hi, hi, hello. Thank you all. And it has been a complete pleasure. But as Mark Gray stated, I need to step down. But you're in capable hands with Mark Schaefer. So we work closely together. He and Lisa, I think, will be tag teaming, helping out, helping each other out. And I'm by no means away, so I'll be helping and assisting. So Mark Schaefer, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm excited.
Okay, Mark, would you like to say a few words? I've known you for a long time.
Yes, just very briefly, again, as you said, who can fill Ree's shoes, it's very difficult. And I'll do my best. Just with background, I'm a professor at Danah Drexel Environmental Engineering. I'm also at what was Wizikin, WVW Way, it's now Wizikin Trails. I'm a board member and in charge of the Water Resources Committee. So I spent a lot of time in these environmental activities. And I'm very excited. I've been excited about being part of EAC for all this time. And I think we are just ready to do some really cool things for the township. And we appreciate the support we've had from all the supervisors, Mark, Ed, Kathy, who have of course, you know, Tessie and Danielle haven't been around quite as long. But the support we've received has been very good. And we hope to continue to do things for the township and its residents going forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mark Schaefer as the chairman of the Environmental Advisory Council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Welcome, Mark. Thank you, Ree.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Ree.
Congratulations.
And Ree.
Thank you.
But you're still with us, right?
Absolutely.
And on our parking racks.
Absolutely. I have an environment planning background, water resources background, water quality. So I'm not going anywhere else.
Terrific.
Absolutely.
Terrific.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the discussion of the future of the amphitheater. There's still some open questions on that. So I'm going to table that for tonight. Next up is citizens' comments or concerns for items that we didn't cover on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to ask any questions?
This time, I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Managers' report.
The only thing is that the township will be closed on April second for Good Friday, which wouldn't be this Friday. It'll be next. But we won't have a meeting in between there, so.
Thank you very much. Supervisors' comments. Mr. Brandt?
Well, I I like to congratulate Mark and for for taking over EAC. It's, the subcommittee system is something that I've created nineteen ninety-three. And unfortunately, I don't have the time to attend a lot of these meetings that I like to attend. And EAC is one of them. But I don't want the people to think that I don't follow their work and dedication, not only to EAC, but all the subcommittees. And that makes the township great in the fact that we address so many different areas. But I was happy with the two presentations tonight by Man and Communication Solutions. I think we accomplished the updates that the board needs. And I thought it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so keeping in concert with the earlier presentation from the communications consultant, I encourage everybody to hop on our website and sign up for the email blasts. If you're on Facebook, friend, Lower Gwinnett Township. We're on Twitter as well. I think the handle is at Lower Gwinnett. Is that correct? I don't believe we're on Instagram, but, you know, sign up and we'll keep you informed as best we can. And we're obviously plans to improve on that as well. Blessed Easter, Holy Week to everybody and a solemn Passover as well.
Thank you, Kat. Tessie?
Yeah, thank you, Mark. I'd like to thank Ree for all of her years of of work as chairperson for the EAC. Thank you very much. And I'd like to congratulate Mark again for taking over the position. You're probably going to hear from me a lot, Mark. People may not know that Mark and I are business partners in a company we founded. But so now we'll have more to talk about. So thanks, everybody, for all the great discussion tonight. I'm excited about the communication survey and where we go from now. I think that we have some really good ideas going forward.
Thank you. Danielle?
I also wanted to thank Ree for all of her service and welcome Mark and congratulate him on his his accepting of the chairmanship. I think he'll be an asset to the EAC committee.
In light of the Environmental Advisory Council or committee, I would actually wanted to to bring something to the board's attention. I'm not sure if everybody is aware, but PICO through ICF is offering like energy assessment and heat mapping. It's free to municipalities. There's a low cost to residents, but for municipalities, it is free. We simply need to have our township or authorize our township manager to allow PICO to assess our our energy accounts. And then what they essentially do is utilizing our township buildings, give us an assessment of how we're utilizing energy, if there's ways to save money or if there's ways to reduce, I mean, become more energy efficient. Because it is free and because the it, the program expires May fifteenth, it's something that I would like to make a motion for us to consider authorizing the township manager to go forward in signing for PICO. It's ideally done in the colder months so that you have a better understanding of how you're utilizing energy during the most stressful times of this, the year. However, because this program is ending in May, I do not want us to miss out on it. I think it takes steps towards us understanding our energy utilization in ways that we can be more efficient and save and save taxpayer dollars essentially. So I would like to make that motion.
Craig, we had the the energy survey. Was it PICO about three years ago?
It was not PICO. We had an outside agency come in, which is why we did the upgrade of the HVAC, did all the windows, did the garage doors, so forth and so on. But yes, we can have PICO come in and.
They don't actually, I don't think, come in. They kind of just do it through, I think it's electronic. They they kind of do it at the assessment, just utilizing your account and doing an overview of of your energy usage.
Yeah, I get home reports all the time from PICO.
Yeah, but because this is free and because I think that it's a good chance for us to have a good understanding of where we stand right now.
Yeah, we could take another look at it. It's 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 free. I just don't want the staff to take a lot of time because we we went through an exhausted one and made all kinds of changes. But we could go back again. I mean, there's there's no harm in doing that.
I think it's just really just authorizing Craig to sign a form and PICO accesses our accounts and does it.
Okay.
It is available at low cost for residents if it's something of interest for them.
Craig, could you take a look at that, please?
We can. And just to add on that, the with the streetlight program, they, and I know they just looked at the streetlights, but we will, as everyone knows, during that time, we will be adding about forty-five to sixty streetlights that they were not billing us for. So so I guess it's good in a way and it's bad in a way. So.
Right, well, we're also getting the upgrades. So so when we're, when that is ready to be executed, Craig, we do need a report out. So and yeah, I'm sure you would let us know because that was part of the energy savings program. Okay, again, I'd like to thank Ree and Mark.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt you. Do we need to have a second? And do we need to, do we need to vote to authorize Craig to?
I I don't think so. We can just have Craig do it. Would you like a vote, Danielle?
Yeah, why don't we do a vote? That'll be fine.
Okay, Danielle, we'll take that as a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, again, Mark and Ree, thank you so much. You know, for all. Uh, you know, for all your dedication, the EAC is very important and will continue to be so and grow in importance. Uh, as we get closer to uh, hopefully agreements with the regulators, uh, TMDL and other issues. It's it's, it's gonna grow in importance and it and it's very important to the quality of life in Lower Gwinnett. Um, also for all of you that don't know, there was another tragedy, another shooting. Uh, my understanding is out in Colorado, ten people passed away. Something the country doesn't need. We don't uh. It's just sad all the way around, so everybody keep those poor souls in your, in your thoughts. So thank you for attending. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.